I would ask for you to sign up now. It looks like we got a whopping two tonight. And I'll repeat that again, just so I won't be accused of not, uh... Is there anyone who would like to speak this evening? Okay. Hello, Mike. All right. Then what we'll do is we'll get started here. The City of Castle Hill's regular meeting, October the 11th, 2016, at 6:30 PM in the Council, Castle Hills chambers. I will call this meeting to order and determine whether a quorum is present. A quorum is present. We will now... Um, are we? Did he come? Okay. Our gentleman who was going to do the invocation tonight, uh, something came up, so he isn't going to be here, but we will continue with the pledge of allegiance by Mr. Quentin Baker.
Join in, folks. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. I'm honored tonight, our, our item two on the agenda is announcements and presentations, item A. Uh, I'm honored tonight to, uh, welcome U.S. Representative Congressman Lamar Smith. Let's give, let's give Mr. Smith a, a round of applause here.
This, this is the nicest welcome I've had in a long time. Uh, thank you all very much. And, uh, really, I believe or not, I have no agenda. I just wanted to stop by. Douglas Gregory was nice enough to say, why don't you drop by sometime? And this worked out well, and, uh, it sounds like it's a good time to stop by, not a huge agenda tonight. And, uh, Mayor, joy talking to you just a minute ago. I mentioned to the mayor, uh, so you know why I sort of have more of a, than just a passing interest in wanting to stop by, but my mother and father-in-law, uh, lived there, I think firstly, almost all of the last, something like forty years in Castle Hills. And these were their Schaefer's on 6600 West Avenue. Uh, Cliff Schaefer, my father-in-law, passed away about four years ago, and my mother-in-law, Katie Schaefer, just passed away this year. And in fact, I'm actually going from here to go check on the house to make sure everything is okay. You know, with all the police officers in the, in the police department here, maybe I should just say, you know, keep an eye on 6600 West Avenue when you happen to drive by. Uh, make sure there's no broken windows or something like that. But, uh, they loved living in Castle Hills. They loved their neighbors. Everybody seems to know everybody. There's a real sense of community here that you don't find, uh, everywhere. Uh, Mayor told me he has been here for sixty-two years, uh, that makes a rest of us, I guess, newcomers by, uh, comparison, but it also, uh, anybody I mentioned, the mayor knows exactly who they are and exactly what their address is, so everybody can be on notice that he's keeping an eye on everything, too. Um, I actually, uh, in anticipation of being here tonight, I checked with my office in, in DC and said, are there any bills or is there any legislation that we've passed recently that it, uh, have, uh, become enacted into law that would impact, uh, localities like the city of, of, um, Castle Hills? And the response buzzed back was, well, not really. Uh, but, uh, they pointed out correctly and reminded me that almost everything we do in DC does impact everybody indirectly or directly. And, uh, let me mention a couple of such... One thing that I've been, uh, trying to get done while I've been in Congress is to address the, what I would call, um, overly burdensome, unnecessary, and costly regulations. And I introduced a bill that has passed the House and actually passed the Committee of Jurisdiction in the Senate and is now awaiting action on the Senate floor. And to me, it's very simple and very obvious and very commonsensical, uh, but it still is, at this point, being opposed by the administration. And this was a bill to say that no regulation would go into effect, and I don't take a stand on regulations, uh, in this bill, but I say no regulation can go into effect unless the underlying data that the administration says justifies, uh, the regulation is made public. Uh, the American people deserve to see it. It needs to be peer-reviewed, and the American people's representatives in Congress need to see it. And when I first, uh, came up with this idea, uh, and I'm, really am going to be non-parson tonight, the administration actually testified in, in favor of the bill. But as soon as the bill passed the House, it looked like it was going to pass the Senate, uh, the decision was made by someone to reverse course, and, uh, the administration had passed it, I mean, opposed it, and that's what's slowing things down in the Senate. But to me, uh, saying that the data underlying the regulation should be made public, uh, is, is, like I say, commonsensical, and to the extent that, uh, it's being refused to made public, it makes me suspicious that the data doesn't justify the regulation, or the data doesn't exist, or the data may be, uh, cherry-picked. So, we're going to continue to try to eliminate the unnecessary regulations in that regard. We're obviously trying to keep an eye on taxes and on spending. Uh, we would do well to emulate what you do here in Castle Hills when it comes to budgets. And the fact that the federal government can year after year after year spend beyond its means, uh, is absolutely the road to insolvency at some point, and I'm hoping we can get back to at least aim towards a balanced budget, even if it takes us, uh, ten years to get there. Uh, lastly, and, uh, I'm currently chairman, in cases of any interest where I can be of any help to anybody, I'm currently chairman of the Science, Space, and Technology Committee. It's a wonderful committee. Uh, we have jurisdiction over agency budgets totaling forty billion dollars. They include NASA, EPA, Department of Energy's Research and Development Budget, which is eight billion dollars, and some other agencies as well, smaller agencies. But it's a fascinating committee when you talk about space, when you talk about technology. Now, I introduced a bill that became, that has now become law to actually expand the definition of STEM. That gets into our juris- jurisdiction naturally because of the technology component to, uh, include computer science. So we now actually have STEM plus science, technology, engineering, math, plus computer science, which will help our young people today in lots and lots of different ways. Uh, before, I was chairman of the Science Committee. I was chairman of the Judiciary Committee, and at one time, want to say to our law enforcement officials who are here, I was chairman of the Crime Subcommittee. And I can only say to you all, uh, and I'm still a member of the Judiciary Committee, even though I'm no longer chairman, if there's anything I can do to help you with law enforcement, everything from legislation and, um, and defining laws to grants you might apply for, uh, let me know that. Uh, I oftentimes, in speeches, talk about the three professions that I think deserve the greatest respect, uh, have the greatest responsibility, and sometime not the greatest pay. Uh, they are law enforcement, uh, clergy, and educators. And, uh, law enforcement deserves our thanks every single day for what they do, and I'm... Didn't know they were going to be present tonight, but just wanted to acknowledge that and thank you all very much. Um, Mayor, I don't... Oh, lastly, Mike Brennan, uh, has been a friend, uh, at the, at the risk of embarrassing him. Sometimes you talk about friendships of years. We've been friends for decades, and I don't... He may not want to confess to that, but I'll confess to that. That's how far back we go. So, it was nice to see him and, uh, others in the room whom I know as well from, uh, past friendships. So, uh, Mayor, if it, if I'm available, if you want to have questions or comments or advice, uh, the occasional constructive criticism is welcome, as long as it's not too high of a criticism.
Sure.
Uh, but, uh, anyway, I'm happy to respond or, or not, whatever you deem to...
Thank you. Thank you, Representative Smith. Uh, we didn't have any, uh, bodies sign up this evening, but I did want to thank, uh, Douglas for, for reaching out to you, or you reaching out to him, or however that, that situation was, to have you here tonight. In fact, and before you left, I'd like to see if you could, if we could get a picture with you.
Oh, I'd love to do that.
As our representative.
Love to do that.
And, uh, uh, did, did anyone on council have a, uh, question for Representative Smith?
I'm delighted if you're gonna let me...
Uh-oh.
No, Douglas, anybody but you. Douglas, remember our agreement. I won't tell anything about you in high school, college days, if you don't say anything about me in high school.
Right. And you don't have to talk about anything that happened.
We go back to grammar school together.
You don't have to talk about anything that happened today.
Yeah, he passed.
Go ahead, sir.
He's wedged right in between my brother and myself. Uh, since you overs- you have oversight at NASA, has the NASA budget increased over the last few years, or has it been decreasing? And what are the goals of NASA nowadays?
Gosh, uh, all great questions we're trying to answer ourselves, but, uh, quickly, no, uh, NASA's budget has been flatlined. At least the overall budget has been flat. However, the amount of money going to space exploration has been slightly, uh, decreased. Uh, the administration has wanted to transfer some of the funds that would otherwise go to space exploration, uh, go to climate change, and so that's why some of the funding for, um, space exploration has been cut. We've been trying to, uh, put that money back in, so let's just call it a flat budget. As far as what the goals are, uh, you know, we had the great Apollo program, uh, fifty years ago, where we landed, um, twelve people on the moon. Uh, and the next huge step is probably landing people on Mars. We've got robots there. We've got land, um, various, um, landing craft already on Mars, but as far as getting people there, it's probably going to be, uh, twenty to twenty-five years, and it won't be cheap. Uh, but Mars is, uh, at such a distance, uh, that depend, if you wait until the Earth and the Mars are, are closest together, it's still a year and a half round trip. And there are a lot of obstacles to trying to pull that off at this point, but that's the next goal. I might say in space general, though, uh, looking a little bit in the closer future, uh, there are two big, um, news stories that will occur, say, in the next three to four to five years. One is, uh, you might call it space tourism. In the next two to three years, uh, a typical American, not an astronaut, is going to be able to pay a certain amount of money, and we've got two private companies that, that will take them into low Earth orbit, sixty-two miles up. Uh, that's not that far in the sense you're not going to see the pale blue dot that's the Earth in the distance. You're going to see the curvature of the Earth. You're going to be weightless for a few minutes, uh, but, uh, you're up and back in one day. You'll probably get a certificate that says you're a junior astronaut or something like that, but, uh, people are going to literally be able to buy a seat, pass a fairly basic physical, and be able to go into low Earth orbit if they want to. Does anyone want to guess what the cost is? You can sign up today and get that ticket. Uh, the cost is two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. So, we'll have a sign-up sheet in the back of the room, Mayor, when we, when we finish. Uh, and the next, uh, the next big thing in space is probably, uh, going to be able to... We, we're right now, uh, in, in the last three or four or five years, we've gone from not being able to detect a single exoplanet, which is to say a planet not in our, uh, solar system, uh, to now having detected over two thousand exoplanets, just in five years. And, uh, a dozen or so are candidates, uh, to be very Earth-like and have water on their surface. And when we develop the next big telescope, we're going to be able to analyze the spectra, uh, coming from those Earth-like planets, and we will probably be able to determine with near certainty whether or not there is some form of life, and it may well be vegetative, depending on what, um, gases are in the atmosphere. If we find a planet with, uh, with a substantial amount of oxygen or even methane, we're going to know that something is giving that off other than rocks. And so that will be, uh, the new story of the century when that comes. Both of those coming probably in the next, uh, uh, in the case of space tourism, probably three to four years, maybe sooner. In the case of, uh, detecting, possibly detecting, uh, an Earth-like planet with some form of, of at least vegetative life is probably certainly within a decade. So, that's two, those are two big space, uh, news items coming up before we head to Mars.
All right. Uh, Mr. Paul?
Congressman, it, it may dovetail with what your initial statement was about data, but I've been following your continuing, uh, saga with the EPA on getting accurate data before decisions are made. How are you coming on that?
Um, I'm not coming as well as I should. A lot of individuals are resisting the subpoenas that I've issued, or they're trying to dribble out the information and, uh, stall as long as they can. Um, so, uh, we are, uh, not having the success that we would like. Uh, it's awfully hard towards, frankly, and speaking very politically, towards the humid administration, uh, to get what you want, because, uh, when the administration is over, they figure they're gone and, uh, don't have to, uh, worry about it. So, uh, it's, it's a frustration, because most times, people respect the rule of law, and when you get a subpoena, whether you want to or not, you respond to it. Uh, we are not seeing that, and, uh, it's a, it's a change in the way, um, government operates that probably does not serve the people in the best way.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone else? Counsel, if you'll, uh, join me in the front here, we'd like to get a picture of, uh, the Congressman before he gets away. And, uh, again, we'll be honored to do that, and also, uh, thank you again for... Thank you again for...
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it.
Coming by our city.
Well, thank you for letting me, uh, come by, and thank you for letting me, uh, uh, make some comments as well. And the fact that you want the photo is also a compliment, because, uh, I, because you don't believe in guilt by association, so I'm just delighted to be in a photograph with you all.
Yeah, oh, no, not at all. Thank you.
Just don't push that triangle then. I think this is good. Yeah, as soon as the mayor comes on over here. I think this is gonna be good. And you can get the seal, too, if you go through there.
Thank you for getting dressed, Mayor.
You can get the seal and the things if you go through there.
Okay. Cool. The paparazzi is crazy.
Oh, yeah.
Can I take one, please? Thank you. I have no remarks.
Thank you again, Douglas, for making sure that that, that happened while he was in Okay. This is item B, uh, on item two, this is, uh, B, recognize Corporal Romeo Munoz, Corporal Ron Singleton, Officer Gary Tomlin, for graduation from the FBI LITA, which is the Law Enforcement Executive Development Association. Uh, I understand Ron couldn't be here tonight because of a, uh, something else, but we do want to recognize the fact that we have some of our officers here, and also I believe a family back there to, uh, to help us along with this. Chief, you want to move?
Mayor, counsel, uh, we've been here before. We're continuing with our quest to get all of our officers through the FBI LITA program, um, Command Leadership Institute, Supervisor Leadership Institute, and the Executive Leadership Institute. I've explained them before. It's a, it's high-level executive training. It's a three-week program, uh, tiered one-week blocks. It's very important that we, uh, get our officers trained to this level. It helps the citizenry, and it helps our staff as well. So with that said, I'd like to also allow, or let counsel know that we have graduated eight officers from this program, and we have applied for, um, and all this is free training, by the way, because we host the class here, which is six-hundred-and-ninety-five dollars per student if we were to have to send an officer to this class, and we typically send about three per session. Uh, and we're going to continue on. Uh, next year, we've applied for, and it's my understanding, it looks like we're going to get the, uh, class, be able to host them once again. So we'll try to get three more officers through this program next year in 2017. So eight officers have graduated, and it's, uh, it's a, it's a very, I'm very pleased with that. Corporal Singleton is in, uh, Las Vegas, the roulette wheel, so we go in and gave him a pass for that. Corporal Munoz, Officer Gary Tomlin, come on up here, please, sir. And, uh, we got a, Officer Tomlin's family in the back. Come on up here, ma'am, please, Ms. Tomlin and youngsters. And, uh, Mayor Howell will, uh, give a short statement and present them with their pens. Mayor?
Uh, I don't know if, if a lot of the public knows, these, uh, these FBI, uh, LITA programs have, uh, choice to where they go, choice to where they hold their classes, and they chose to hear the last few times. That, that, uh, not only honors our city, but it also honors the people who were, uh, impressive enough in order to make this happen. I want to, uh, zoom in. I believe you're involved in that. Uh, take time. Thank you very much, Chief. You're involved. Everyone in our law enforcement is, is involved, because we set the standard that the FBI wants, wants to see around here, and that's, that's awesome. Okay? So with that said, I would like to, uh, first of all, Romeo, I would like to, uh, give you this award, the FBI LITA Trilogy Award. There's two pens, which you'll, uh, learn on your uniform. And, and let's give, uh, Officer Munoz a, uh, round of applause. And as we have Officer Tomlin, you will also receive the award, and these are two pens, which you'll wear on his uniform, which shows that he graduated and trained. And thank you, sir, for you, and we thank you for your service. For, uh, for your all the service you do for us. I appreciate the attention. Uh, please, get over here. He's very... Are you firing? How good is it? What was it? All the members, yeah. Yeah, that looks good. Thank you.
Thank you again. Okay, we're going to move on to citizens to be heard, and, uh, we have two people signed up this evening. Mr. Baker?
Uh, want to chat with you about an issue we uncovered with, uh, one of our city ordinances, the ordinance that specifically deals with, uh, street restoration in the event that there's a street cut. Um, we stumbled across this issue while attempting to connect water to the 101 Hibiscus House. We're trying to connect that house to, uh, Saul's Water Service. It was on, been on a well all these years. Uh, water main is across Hibiscus, the opposite side from the house, and, uh, once we got into the bidding process, the contractor wanted the trench across the street, and our city staff members pointed out a city ordinance that requires restoration of the street once the repair is made. I've given you a copy of that ordinance. The, the ordinance number specifically... What are my reading glasses? Bear with me. Thirty-eight dash one sixty-five for our record, okay? The, the issue, the gotcha here is that, once a repair is done, the contractor is obligated to restore the street, okay? Which makes sense, but if you look at the language of the code, the restoration extent is based on the score that that particular street has. The one-hundred block of Hibiscus miraculously is scored ninety-one out of one hundred. That's an issue I wanted to bring to the table anyhow. I'm not sure how a forty- or fifty-year-old street gets a ninety-one out of one hundred score, so it does make me question the scoring, and I know you guys are dependent on that scoring for your decision on street restoration, right? But the, the glitch here is that with that one hun- excuse me, that ninety-one score, we would be obligated to repave the entire one-hundred block of Hibiscus. The language specifically says, you know, the entire block. The bid for us to restore the entire one-hundred block of Hibiscus was eighty-six thousand dollars. All right? Obviously infeasible for any individual to have to bear. Fortunately, our solution is that the water main is not under the street. It's off to the south side of the street, so we're going to use directional boring. We're going to go under the street, okay? So that's how we're avoiding the problem. Otherwise, I'd be here today begging you to change the ordinance, because obviously it'd be financially infeasible for us to handle that. Most of the water mains are going to be off to the side of the streets. That's pretty typical, but not absolute. So someone else could come into a problem with their water connection, their water main, have to make a street cut and be impacted by the same clause. Sewers are under the streets in the vast majority of cases. So if we have a homeowner or business that has to repair their sewer or make a sewer connection, we're back into the same issue, where they'd have to make a street cut, okay? Uh, if you look at City of San Antonio ordinances, there is an appeal process. They have a very similar ordinance, only it's about twice as long in language, all right? But in the City of San Antonio's ordinance, they actually have three levels of appeal, where if you trip into this kind of an ordinance, you can first go to a city engineer, uh, don't quote me on this, but I think a city engineer, city manager, city council, something like that. So at least you can get a reprieve from the language of the ordinance without having to change the ordinance. We have no such out. Here, we're stuck. The language is, is closed-ended, you're forced into the street restoration, okay? So I just wanted to bring to council's attention that we have a, an ordinance that is really overly burdensome for anyone who might have to make a street cut, okay? And, and please be alert, I question the validity of the, the rating that was placed on that street. Ninety-one out of one hundred for that old street just seems overly high, okay? Last thing to bring, uh, to your attention, last le- lesson learned from this ordeal, deals with line locates. Are y'all familiar with the line locate process? No? Okay. So, quick education. Anytime someone is going to be, uh, doing any excavation work, by law, you're supposed to call for a line locate. The number is eight-one-one. Free service, you're supposed to come out and locate all buried utilities in the area that will be excavated, all buried utilities. If you look at where the street projects are going on now, you'll see paint marks on the ground, okay? Yellow for gas, blue for water, green for sewer, red for power, orange for data, okay? You'll see those paint marks all over. That's line locate, all right? What we discovered, the, the hard way here is, we called eight-one-one for the line locate to figure out where that water main was, and after two weeks, did not get a line locate. Supposed to take two days. What we found is that eight-one-one service isn't communicating with Saul's. You have to go separately to Saul's. This is, to me, unspeakable. Why we have this public service that's not communicating with a water utility, don't know, but to share with our city officials, if we need anything done that needs a water line locate, be apprised, go directly to Saul's website. They've got a lo- locate email. Just go ahead and contact Saul's directly. Um, you know, the absence of a line locate unfortunately doesn't mean the absence of a utility underground. And last thing we want is a utility strike if somebody's digging, okay? So let me leave it with that. I ask you to look into that ordinance. I do think we need some relief there. If someone does have to make a street cut and trips into these ordinances, it would require paving, and in language says, block to block, and so an entire city block, okay? Thank you all very much.
As we know, the rules don't allow us to respond to Mr. Baker, but, uh, Mike, would you get with, uh, John and Douglas? And, uh, uh, I'd like to talk to you about that afterwards. Maybe we can task them to do some, do some, uh, homework on that. Douglas, you were on council when we, uh, uh, passed that no-cut street, or that cut street ordinance. So, anyway, okay, thank you, Quentin. All right. With that said, let's move on. Wally? Wally, you're signed up for non-agenda items. Did you want to speak this evening? Guess not. No problem. Okay, we're going to move on to item four, which is, uh, the consent agenda. Item A is consider the approval of September Treasures Report. B, consider approval of August eighth, 2016, special city council meeting. C is consider the approval of August ninth, two thousand sixteen special and regular city council meeting. Item D, consider the approval of August sixteenth, two thousand sixteen special council meeting. E, consider the approval of September sixth, two thousand sixteen special council meeting. And last is consider the approval of September fourteenth, the special city council meeting minutes. Do I have anyone who wants to pull any of these or adjust these minutes? Okay, we'll take them all in one. This is, uh, consider the approval of the complete consent agenda as written. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second? Okay, all in favor? Okay, it is unanimous. Thank you, council. Moving on to item five, which is consider ordinance number two oh one six dash one oh one-one, an ordinance adopting limitation on the increase of ad valorem taxes for the resident homestead of a person who is disabled or is sixty-five years of age or older, as authorized by Article eight, Section one BH of the Texas Constitution and Section eleven point two six one of the Texas Tax Code. Before we get into discussion, Mr. Shans, did you want to add anything to this before we?
Be happy to answer questions. Have nothing to add except what was in your packet.
Thank you so much. Okay, let's go ahead and get a motion and a second on the table. Do I have a motion for this item? Okay, do I have a second for this item?
Can I do a, a motion for discussion?
You'll have to second to get a motion for.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for discussion. With that said, um, let's start to the right. Douglas, did you wanna, did you wanna make any comments or questions regarding this item on the agenda, please?
I have one or two questions to Mr. Shans first.
Okay.
Mr. Shans, did we determine whether or not we could have an ordinance that freezes the property tax rate? As I understand it, there is nothing in the language of the code that says you cannot freeze the rate.
That, that's correct. And I did ask TML, and they said that a type, a type, they'll, they'll, type a general law city can only take actions that are allowed by the law. So if it's silent, you cannot do it.
But the maximum in the law is silence construe- construes consent.
No, it, what they said is you must have, I think the, I think the legal term, and Mr. Brennan can take over here if he wishes, express authority by the state to allow you to do something. If you do not have express authority from the sovereign, you cannot do it. So we can freeze the tax dollar amount, but you can't mess with the rate, can't mess with the age, can't do things like that.
Okay. I brought this forth, and I, I think this is something we ought to consider, definitely do. Mr. Shans, I don't know whether y'all got it, but he gave me a little analogy in here that spoke against the freeze. And, uh, did you all get this? Except it leaves, it leaves out one little bit of information that the person who's getting the exemption has been paying this for many, 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 many years. And the people who are younger were not paying. He was basically paying for the future. So you're basically giving the person who's sixty-five disabled or for whatever purposes claiming the exemption, a respite from paying taxes after doing it for probably at least forty years of their adult life. We've found out, the other argument was, well, it'll destroy a city. It'll cut property, it'll cut revenues coming in. Well, as we have found out, Alamo Heights in twenty-seven passed this ordinance. And the last thing that I've seen Alamo Heights hasn't sunk into the sunset, and they seem to be doing quite well. Basically what this does, it, I've seen this among a lot of people in this city over the years. They were age sixty-five or seventy, or in many cases seventy-two, seventy-five. And they're at a real crunch time in their life, especially if one spouse or another is dead or is in a nursing home. How are they gonna pay all these property taxes? I have a very modest house, and right now it's between seven and eight thousand dollars, the total tax burden. Castle Hills is about fourteen hundred dollars. When I came here, it was about three hundred and fifty dollars. We, this is to me, some probably could be argued a normal progression of the times and expenditures of a city. But when you hit sixty-five or, or older, or you're disabled, I think you ought to be given an exemption. This also has the benefit of council, of forcing economic common sense to sort of a bucket of cold water into city councils, especially when times are good, to willy-nilly just throw money on projects that need not be had, or hire a lot of people who do not be needed, or any other pet project they may have. If you were forced to be fiscally conservative, and this would do that, I think it would be better for the city as a whole in the present. It'd be better for the citizen sixty-five and older now and until they leave and in the future. The good thing about this is that if somebody gets the exemption at sixty-five and they die, the spouse gets the exemption until they die or until the house or property is sold. Then the, it immediately jumps up to the next ensuing rate. So in Castle Hills, I think we have twenty-five percent of the people are sixty-five and older?
Correct, twenty-four.
So it would have an effect on presently twenty-five percent of the people sixty-five and older. I don't think we should have policies that enforce people to leave where they're living. I remember back in the late seventies when I lived in Houston, there were a lot of people, especially in the, in, inside the loop, that had a lot of cottages they had lived in since nineteen forty and nineteen fifty. And their property went from about modest fifteen to twenty-five thousand dollars to five hundred thousand dollars. And person after person after person had to sell their house at the age of sixty-five, seventy, seventy-five, and leave because they couldn't afford the property taxes. That should never be the case here in Castle Hills. I've seen my house go from when I bought it, I paid a hundred and thirty-seven thousand five hundred dollars, and it's currently valued at around, I think, two hundred and ninety or three hundred thousand dollars. You go down the road ten years, if we have any type of inflation, the house would be worth four or five hundred thousand dollars. I'll be seventy-four or eighty, and I'll have to come up with an enormous amount of property tax, or leave. I, I don't think this is the type of burden we should put on people's sixty-five or older. And I think this should be a consideration to the council, and I look forward to hearing what other council members think.
Okay, thank you, Douglas. Uh, what was the twenty-five percent? Is that what the?
Yes, sir.
The people over sixty-five are twenty-five percent now?
Constitute, right, twenty-five percent of the total tax.
Does that factor in, does that factor in their spouses too? What, I, I'm a little.
No, that's just people who, as of today, or as of today, would qualify for being over sixty-five.
Okay, thank you, thank you, thank you, Douglas. Mr. Paul, did you have any questions or comments regarding the item on the table, please?
Yeah, I think I made a comment last time that I'm probably the most qualified up here to be able to speak to this. I consider I live over in the cheap seats and, as I refer to it. And, uh, my, my taxes have not gone up that much, even though my value has gone up. The amount of money that it would save me, I believe it would cost the city because when you put it as an aggregate of all the monies that we're sitting here, we're talking about how are we gonna get money fixed reach, how are we gonna do this, how are we gonna do that? And we want to talk about this type of thing. You referred to Alamo Heights. Alamo Heights obviously has an extremely different tax base than we do. And there's a lot of things different about that. The third thing I want to mention is, we have, the state has a law. Mr. Shans, you correct me if I'm, or Mr. Brennan, correct me if I'm wrong. I can't see you over there. I believe the state has a law that it comes sixty-five, if the individual lives in a house does not want to pay taxes, he doesn't have to pay money out of his pocket. Yes, it accrues against the property, yes. Somebody eventually has to pay it back, but if that individual is that concerned about living expenses, then he doesn't have to pay his taxes. Is that not correct, Mr. Brennan?
Yes, that's correct.
Correct.
Okay, all right. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Mr. Squire, do you have any questions or comments for the item on the table, please?
Yeah, um, it's actually a quick question. If they don't pay taxes, there's no way, I mean, they get to stay in the house for as long as they would like to, right? There's nothing that can be done? If you don't pay taxes?
Although there's an eight percent tax per year compounded.
Well.
So if one spouse has to go to a nursing home and they have to come up with the money, the, the single biggest asset of a couple is their house. It's not their savings. And usually when something like that happens, an emergency may require, especially if it's a very expensive nursing home, to, to sell the house. And if you have done this for ten years, you're having an eight, eight percent compounded penalty over ten years of the accrued tax. That's, that could wipe out the value of the house. So it, uh, yes, you don't have to pay the tax, but.
And again, the question was, is, is, is you cannot be forced out of your home?
That is correct.
Okay, all right.
I believe that is correct.
So, you know, Douglas, you bring a, a very good agenda item to the table. And I really like the idea of it, and I would absolutely love to be able to support this idea because I think we need to support our citizens, especially our citizens, that, that the potential of, of, you know, there's more of a potential of concern, and, and I believe, again, that it's very enviable. The only concern, the, the other concern I have, though, is however, is our city has tens of millions of dollars of ongoing liabilities, which you're aware of, that we have to get by some somehow, and we gotta get these taken care of. And if we have to do it internally, it's gonna be very hard. Obviously, we're looking at outside ways to try to help address these liabilities. But however, until we get them addressed, we still have multi-millions of dollars that we gotta get around in this city. And, you know, this is a good idea, but it may be a little premature until we better stabilize these, these costs. And, you know, I'm talking about our drainage toss going forward because that's the, that's the huge issue that we gotta get around, in, in my opinion. And so, again, I like the idea, um, and I think once, once we're able to stabilize these, these drainage issues, then I think we should move forward on something like this. But I think it's just a little premature to do this at this time. And that's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Squire. Mr. Daggett, did you have any questions or comments regarding the item on the table, please?
A few questions first. Out of, say, a six thousand dollar tax bill, for clarification, how much comes to the City of Castle Hills out of that bill? What percentage of school taxes versus ad valorem taxes out of that, just so?
I'm not sure I understand the question. No, no school taxes come to the city?
No, I understand.
Oh, I'm sorry. I misunderstood.
Out of a six thousand dollar tax bill on a property, for instance, okay, how much actually would come to the city out of that bill?
Whatever, fifty, fifty cents on the hundred dollars, so a.
One-sixth.
Yeah, what was it, two, around two dollars? And when you look at everything from the, the health district, the hospital, to San Antonio College, Alamo, all of that, whatever it comes up to, I would guess it's, it's less than twenty-five percent of what you pay comes to the city.
Okay.
Your total bill is six thousand dollars. You're paying probably fifteen hundred or less to the city.
Just for clarification for everybody, what we're proposing here does, has nothing to do with school taxes. It's only the ad valorem taxes, which is a pretty small percentage of that whole bill. So, um, this is a really tough one for me because I, like Douglas says, I hate the idea. For instance, my mother, if she, you know, to have to have her home be sold to stay in it or something like that. But you have to be pretty tight just for that percentage of the ad valorem tax. Not, not the whole tax bill, but the ad valorem part of that. We're only affecting a small part of that overall tax bill, and we're only freezing a small part of it. So that is one kind of thought I had. Douglas, you have said in the past, you said we might have tremendous tax increases in the future to be able to pay for these things. But then the concern I have is that, okay, who are we gonna shift that to? Now the younger population in our city? And we're gonna make that burden even more on them because we cannot, we have the exemption in place for the over sixty-five. And as we age, we're gonna potentially even have more over sixty-five here. So then we're shifting that burden even more to the younger population. We, it's just, I have some reservations about this, although I really have been for years really liked the idea of the cap. What if we needed to pass a bond in the future and we needed to raise taxes? This is my question. We need to raise taxes to pay for that bond. How are we gonna do it? If we have this exemption in place?
Mike, springboarding on his question, does, if we passed a bond and the sixty-five, excuse me, was, was frozen, would they be exempt, would the homeowner be exempt from the, the bond fee or the taxes on that house?
They're exempt, period, right? Yeah, yeah, the, the cap, the cap is truly for the, the total tax burden from ad valorem taxes. It can never be raised.
So when you turn sixty-five, you automatically don't have to pay the school taxes, is that correct?
No, no, you, you simply, when you turn sixty-five, whatever you paid that year stays level for the rest of your life.
That's right.
If you pay. Only, only for the ad valorem taxes in the City of Castle Hills, okay?
The school taxes can go up and up and up in the future.
Okay, yeah.
So to answer, to answer that question. Yes.
We've had two bond issues in the city. The second one was admittedly a ragtag one, but the first one failed.
I'm not talking about the validity of the past.
What I'm saying is, the reason a lot of people gave, the reason they didn't vote for the bond, was they were older and the dramatic increase of the property tax rate that it would impose on people who are sixty-five, seventy, seventy-five, and eighty. They recognize that is a burden to, a burden to them, although it's not the total tax burden they take. It's a burden to them. And a lot of people did not pass the bond. I think the reason this would give comfort to somebody who's seventy-five or eighty and not, not believing that their tax, property tax rate is gonna go up an enormous amount to, to pay for a bond issue.
So you're saying then in this, correct me if I'm not, if I'm wrong, but then twenty-five percent of our population would not be paying the bond?
No, they would be paying the property tax rate. They would not be paying the increased property tax rate that would become for the bond. That is correct.
Make it even more expensive for the remainder.
And you can make the reverse argument. The younger people have been getting a free pass because the older people have been paying it for thirty or forty years. And now the younger people have had their, they're, now they're having their time at bat. When their parents were paying the property tax for them, or when they left town and decided to come back when they were forty, it was the parents who continued to pay until they were sixty-five. You shifted the burden to the parents and the older people for many years. So it's ju- it can be argued just the exact opposite. And I don't, and I don't think there's, one other thing that I didn't know until Mr. Shans and I were talking about this, and it surprised the heck out of me. Didn't you tell me that if you were in the military and you were mustered out on a, what was it?
Hundred, hundred percent disability.
A hundred percent disability. You don't pay property taxes, is that correct?
Right, the state exempts that group.
Or your spouse, or your spouse either.
You don't even pay property tax.
Isn't there a freeze?
And one of my neighbors who's much younger than I am has a very huge disability because he has sleep apnea. So he doesn't pay fifty percent of the property tax rate that everybody else pays. Good for him because that's the way the military service has it. But there are a load of people in this city, in the military, who don't even pay the property tax at all. So, and it hasn't killed our city, and they're doing something that's exactly within legal bounds, and they'd be crazy not to do it. I just didn't know about that. That really threw me.
Didn't, didn't that just start, though? Isn't that a recent development?
Last year when that passed.
So we haven't even seen the full effect of what that's gonna do.
You won't see it.
I know it's been around a few years, but I honestly don't know when it passed.
It passed last year.
Isn't there a freeze also?
And spouse. And spouse.
Yeah.
So if someone is disabled, military disabled, and they're not 65 yet, they're also tax-free, and their spouse.
Yeah. They could be 45 years old and not pay the property tax.
Well, that's, I don't understand, never mind. That's an argument for the other side.
Go into the service when you're 20, muster out when you're, after 25 years. You're 45 years old, go anywhere you want to, you don't pay the property tax.
The qu... Sorry, I didn't mean to...
If you're disabled.
And if, but that's, I mean, they're the service to their country. And I say, I say that's deserved, personally.
Oh, I'd say it's deserved. If you've been raising several children and you've been married and you're now 60, you've worked all your life, I think you deserve a break and...
And I agree. And if our city didn't have these obligations going forward, I would be completely in favor of this, too.
I want to hear what the rest of the council says.
Are you done?
Well, I fully agree with you, Douglas. It's just the unknown of the future of our obligations for how we're going to pay for bond issues. And, I mean, it makes even, even a harder battle to even pass a bond issue if we have a freeze in effect.
Well, just the opposite makes it easier. Because the people who are voting against it, a lot of times, are the people who are saying, "My property tax rate goes from 50 cents per $1,000 valuation to 65 or 70 cents. I can't do that." And if people aren't paying their taxes, you're rising, you almost have an exponential rise in the amount of deferred taxes that you would have been collecting that are going to be penalized at 8% a year compounded.
But that's a choice.
Well, sometimes, yes, it is a choice, but sometimes it is a situation where you have a spouse. I had one, my parent, one month, and she died 12 years ago. One month in a nursing home, $5,000 per month. Now it's probably 7,500, maybe even $10,000 a month. So many times you have people, it's not a choice. It is a forced decision made by the circumstances that you live in.
I have another question related to this. And in reading about this, it talked about, it's frozen at the current figure unless you do major improvements on the house. For instance, converting the house to, for instance, it said tile roof. But what about a standing seam metal roof? That means it would get reappraised at current market, which would de-incentivize people from keeping up their house.
I think if you add a structured part, like another room or another addition to it, not roofs.
No, roofs wouldn't be included if it increased the value. So if you went from a composition shingle to a tile, then it would go up.
What about if you put a new cedar fence up? You used to have a chain link, and you put a cedar fence up? That could raise the property value. So if you do a major improvement like that?
More than likely, they probably wouldn't, that would, I think it would have to be with the house as opposed to, excuse me, as opposed to the property for the most part. But I doubt that fences would have any significant effect. If you put up a $5,000 fence, that would be minimal impact on a tax roll. And then it freezes at that rate, whatever that happens to be.
Okay. That's all I have for now.
Mr. Trevino, did you have any questions or comments for the item on the table, please?
Yes, sir, Mayor, thank you. I think realistically, nobody really wants to pay more taxes. But the bottom line is that we all knew, moving into Castle Hills, that we have premium services, including police, including public works, including fire, including access to city admin that we don't have to wait in the line for, like you go to San Antonio. And at the end of the day, we have to pay for that. And given the amount of money that we need for our capital improvements, which affect all members of the city of Castle Hills, it's just not fiscally feasible to give this kind of a discount. Looking at the projection Mr. Shands had sent as an example, the amount of revenue lost to the freeze compounds very quickly. I just don't see it as something that we can afford to offer right now.
Thank you. I got a couple of questions. And, you know, a lot of times, I know that people think that we sit up here and ask questions. We already know the answer. But in this case, I don't know this answer, okay? So, and I haven't been able to find it, so here we go. I'm 80 years old. I marry a 25-year-old lady.
You don't have to worry about money.
Have to worry about a heart attack. No, anyway. So, what I, I mean, I think you get where I'm going to with this. They have drugs for that these days.
I can anticipate your, if I can anticipate your question. If she is not at least 55, she does not qualify for your exemption.
So there is, so there is an age of 55?
Yes, sir. Your spouse must be 55 to qualify.
Okay, or older, all right. I don't know how much, well, this does have something to do with the item on the table. And since council's going to be deciding this, and I don't have a vote, since I am creeping up on 65. Did anybody in Thursday's paper read the, what was going to happen with ad valorem tax due to the big box stores in the state? Okay. The, in case you didn't read it, and I don't know how this is going to affect the movement of this tonight, is states are literally freaking out right now. The state of Minnesota, the state of Texas, has already been, already addressed this in some areas, where the big box stores are going to come in and reevaluate their property. Now, how does that affect us here in Castle Hills? We don't have a Lowe's, we don't have a Home Depot, we don't have... But as this catches on around the nation, some, we're talking about states already talking about getting in trouble here real fast and not be able to pay the taxes. And with that said, it's going, the burden's going to fall on the county, not the city. It's not going to fall on us, it'll fall on the city of San Antonio. But ours will be affected by the county, is what it'll be. So, everybody's pulling back. Everybody's trying to find that, and Douglas, you said this during the budget. Everybody's trying to pull back. Everybody's trying to figure out how we can get by with less. Well, these corporate lawyers have found a way now. And you can find the information in the Express News on how they're doing this now. I've got a feeling that they're going to have to put a stop to it, or they're going to break the country, is what they're going to do. Now, are they going to do that? I don't know. And I don't even know how it affects this tonight, other than revenue. So, the other day, we slashed, this past year, we would have slashed $100,000 off because of our fees for roofing. This past year.
Because of the hailstorm and everything, it was quite a bit. I don't remember if it was exactly 100.
I think it was close to 100,000. In a normal year, I think we figured it at just 25,000, okay? I don't know what 25% is. Does anybody even know that figure? 25% of what this, if this passed tonight, what it would cost the city? Okay, what it would cost?
Depending on a lot of assumptions. If the property values, for example, if property values don't go up and we don't raise the tax rate, everybody pays the same anyway. So, two things affect it. If the value of the property increases, or if you raise the property tax, then the 75% remaining pay those raises, not the 100%. When I calculated it, it's something simple, like a penny for four years. Only one penny, with equivalent of about 2% property value increases. Came out to, as I recall, $132,000 in taxes that you would not collect.
Okay, so we have $132,000 plus the 25 on a normal year. Right there, we have, we have to find $175,000 worth of, worth, and that's, if nothing, if nothing goes down. I want to point out that I, among, I'm getting close to 65. I'd like it, too. I'll be honest with you. I was in Austin fighting it with my sister when, a year ago, for disabled veterans, to get not only disabled veterans, but also the spouses. So I think it's a great idea. I think it's a fantastic idea. Whatever council decides to do, though, better be prepared to take on these new deductions in income. And Douglas was right. Does it mean that we cut a policeman? Does it mean we cut a fireman? Does it slow down our services? Does it slow down our trash pickup? Time will tell. Does it increase our crime? Does it cut our income, which we can't talk about? Sure.
It never can be rescinded by a future council?
Nope.
Never. And that, to me, is, was one of the big mistakes that we made in the Constitution of Texas, was saying that once you take this action, it's the only action I know of, off the top of my head, that a council can bind future generations. Usually, the council can rescind laws, you do it all the time, repeal laws, you got asked to tonight. This is one that can never, ever, ever be changed unless we do a constitutional amendment in the state.
And as you know, every year, we seem to be given about 10 to 15 constitutional amendments. And I think you could pass one that says a dog should get a free meal every day. They pass every constitutional amendment. And I think if this serious, if such a situation occurred, that the dramatic nature was negative to the city, they would quickly have a constitutional amendment to stop it. But that hasn't been the case so far.
I just want to point out that, Council, if we move forward, no matter how you decide to do this, since I can't vote, I would be, I would, I would take our income into consideration. And believe me, I'm not arguing against it, and I'm not arguing for it. Shoot, in two years, I can get a discounted Luby's. So, I'll be 65. So, it's, it would actually benefit me for you to move forward on this. But be sure and watch the income.
It has two big benefits that I can see. For those people who no longer work, as they get older, the chances of them losing their house goes down. Because I've seen it too many times among my clients and the people I've known. One spouse gets ill, and the bills mount up, and they're forced to pay the bills, one way or another. That's a benefit that I think is just as equally fine as a service member who can be mustered out and not pay any property tax rate because they've served X number of years. I think it's just as laudable. But the, this other benefit, it's a, it's a very, it's a non-tangible benefit to the city because I think it puts the brakes on city councils. When times are good, they, and flush, they spend like a drunken sailor. We brought in an additional $200,000 this year through the digital signs. That's gone. That's already been spent already. And we're down, and we were usually, last year, we had a $400,000 surplus. I think it was $400,000.
Douglas, the digital signs are special funds. Nobody's touched that money. And 80% of it goes to your committee.
I understand that.
So you spent it all?
I understand that. Let me finish. And now we're going to go from $400,000 that was going to digital signs, is going for internal improvements, to now, we're going to be lucky if we break even this year. And that is because we're flush, we had money to spend, and brother, we spent it. Without a real inquiry as to whether or not it had long-term implications or short-term implications. So, it forces council members to be, take a second look on pet projects they may want to have done. I do, I'm sure all of you have something you want to have done. And it sort of keeps you from, it keeps you more fiscally responsible.
Suzanne, I'm scared again as a mayor. Are we out of money? Okay.
No, Mayor, we're not out of money.
Thank you. Okay, just wanted to make sure. Does anybody else have anything to say? Douglas, you want to start off with the last round?
No.
Okay, Mr. Paul, did you have anything to say?
Yeah. Obviously, again, I'm going, restate. I'm the most qualified up here to be able to speak to this. And I'm just an average citizen like everybody else. And the people become 80 years old, 90, 85, 90, they, at that point in time, they can always just freeze their taxes. And the longer the wait, the easier it is. And the only time those taxes are collected, I'm not suggesting it at all, but the only time taxes would be collected is when the house is sold, not with one person or the other person leaving. Again, I just think that we, we aren't spending, we got to remember that we have, it's like a business. If you're going to open a business, you got to be prepared to do business. You got to be prepared for when business comes. And I don't know if you've been up here and seen the court, I don't know. You know, we only have two people back in, in a county, actually, one and three-quarters. We have two people in court, and they're constantly busy. We have two people in administration that take care of all the permitting, all this stuff. So even though people have said that we've added six people, two of those people are already here, but they were on part-time. I just, you know, we're doing the best we can with what we have. And last year, even though we ended up, we don't know what we're going to end up with until the audit's done, but last year, we were only going to be $27,000 up, I think. But then after the audit was done and everything was finished, all the taxes were collected, it seemed like we ended up with quite a bit more. Department managers, department heads, I think they know how to be frugal, they better be frugal. And the only thing that, as I said, that has increased really is a couple of employees that we needed. The other side of the fence, too, is you mentioned about the $200,000 already being gone. It's not gone, unless you spent your share, 80% of it is drainage. These go into a special fund. They don't go into the budget. They're in a special fund. Now, I question the validity, why city government has to do it that way, but that's the way it is. And so, the funds are still there until we use them for the intended purpose. Thank you.
I'd like to say one more.
Go ahead, Mayor.
Frank, you brought up a good point. I'd like to ask you, Douglas, and I apply this to myself. I've always thought we should run our city government like a business. Do things fiscally responsible. So, I ask you, and I'll ask myself, would we freeze our professional fees at today's fees for our over 65 clients for the next 20 years? And how would that affect our business model? Wow, that's a pretty significant thing. That, I know what, my expenses have gone up in the last 15 years of having my practice, and I can't imagine having those same fees. I have a lot of over 65 patients, anyway, but, and I imagine you do, too. That would really affect your business for the next 20 years if you froze at today's rates. And is that running it like a business? I don't know. It makes me think.
Well, the answer to that is, General Motors is the prime example of that. How you could retire early, and you had escalator clauses, and you're in the business, you saw it, all these people who retired at 50. And the pensions kept growing and growing and growing and growing. And they grew so much, General Motors went under and had to have a bailout. I don't believe for a minute that freezing, I had hoped originally to freeze the property tax rate. But apparently, Mr. Shands and Mr. Brennan are telling me that is something that cannot be done. You just have to freeze the tax. I would have preferred to do the rate. But I don't see the severe impact on that that you do. People, generally speaking, they live to about 80. So you're looking about 15 years, maybe 20, if the spouse is significantly younger, that a person will have that exemption. And it's not like you're not paying the tax at all. It's, you're paying a portion less. If you were 65... If you were 65 when I bought my house, yeah, it would be $1,000 less today. But that, I bought my house almost 30 years ago. So, but we're talking about a small portion of the city, but a significant portion of the city. And it's, I just wanted the council to consider the implications of this.
Mayor, call for the vote.
Okay, the vote's been called. So, what we're going to do is we are going to consider the ordinance number 2016-10-11, an ordinance adopting the elimination of the increase of ad valorem tax for residents homestead of a person who is disabled or 65 years of age or older, as authorized by Article 8, Section 1B-H of the Texas Constitution and Section 11.261 of the Texas Tax Code. We have a motion, we have a second on the table. All in favor? All opposed? Thank you, council. It's 4 to 1. Okay. The next item is Item 6, which is discuss and consider approval of a lump-sum contract with GMK Engineering Services. We do have Mr. Clemens here. So what we'll do is we will, Mike, did you want to make any comments on this?
Be happy to answer any questions, but no, Mr. Clemens is here to discuss the issues.
Okay. So here we go. This is a, it is an action item. So what we'll do is, we'll pause for a moment. Jim, did you want to go ahead? We need to get a, we need to get a motion and a second on the table before we can discuss, but you can go ahead if you want.
Oh, okay. Well, I really don't know where to begin, other than, you know, I did a kind of a quick timeline of events that we can go over that explains, you know, the starting point and where we reached where we are today. But in a nutshell, the first, GMK's first project with the city was approved as a lump-sum fee. And then, and that was for a dozen streets that we were going to do paving on. And our fee for that, just so you know, it included everything through construction, and it was 6.8% of the construction estimate, which is a lot less than what you would typically find for engineering. Engineering typically runs a lot higher than that. But we were able to, working with Diane and everything, bring the cost to a tight level like that. But then, once we moved into doing the projects, what started to happen was, we started out with a dozen streets, and then, at some point, we approached Saws to find out, you know, really, our original concept with Saws was, do we have to adjust manhole lids and water valves? That's all I was thinking, we were just doing a street paving deal. Well, Saws said, well, timeout, we've got all these streets that have sewer in them that are clay pipe and other issues like that. So, you know, I could go into great detail, but what happened was, we pulled seven of the 12 streets off the list, and then we bid out, so I, you know, we'd already had the design done, then we had to pull those streets out, and we, and then we had to like, you know, then we had the design for the five that we were going to do, and then there was new information that came up about Mimosa had some illegal sewer connections, kind of like Cremaria did. So Saws said, pull that one off too. So then we had to change the design again, when we already had it ready. And then, we went to bid the job, and then that's when the city said, let's add Honeysuckle. So we had to add Honeysuckle. And all through, all of those different permutations of the project, there was never a, let's sit down and do another lump-sum agreement. There was just, you know, in working with Diane, she said, just, you know, add up the hours you're spending on the jobs and put your invoice together and send it in. And so, what's happening now, she's not a part of the picture anymore. And, oh, by the way, I want to mention that it's not just the streets package. There were 11, I went back this morning and looked at all of my records. There was actually 11 other little projects we did for the city along the way in the last couple of years. So, you know, that's what we're seeing right now, it's a culmination of all these things. Well, there's not very, apparently, there wasn't the best record-keeping on the city side. Diane's not in the picture anymore. And in talking to Mr. Shands, we agreed, we want to get back to doing it the right way, which is, the most typical method is a lump-sum agreement, where you sit down and you say, these are the services we're going to provide, and here's the price that we, you know, it's a fair and reasonable price for that. So we got off of that over the last year or so, year and a half, maybe. But in working with Mr. Shands, we came up with the idea that, let's go ahead and put together a lump-sum agreement to get us to the finish line on the job that we have in construction now. And then we'll be able to, with the next package, go ahead and do the same thing, and just get back into the mode of operating in that way, where we do lump-sum agreements and not these hourly deals, you know?
Okay. All right. So, Jim has spoken. We do need a motion and a second in order to get this on the table. Do I have a motion to discuss and consider approval of a lump-sum contract with GMK Engineering Services? Do I have a second for that item? I'll recall it again. This is Item 6 on the agenda, discuss and consider approval of a lump-sum contract with GMK Engineering. We have a motion, we need a second? Item dies for lack of second. Sorry, Jim. Okay. Announcement by city council. Mr. Trevino, did you have any?
I just want to thank everybody for the National Night Out. Tried to go to all of the parties, but there were just too many to get to. There was a really good showing at every, every location, and I thank everybody for putting the time and effort to make it happen.
Thank you, Mr. Trevino. Mr. Daggett, did you have any comments for anybody?
No, sir, thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Squire, did you have any comments or?
Just real quick, Mayor, thank you also. I want to echo Mr. Trevino's comments about National Night Out. I appreciate the, all the people that were out and set that, and set it up. Had a great time meeting everybody, wonderful conversations. And it just continues to instill my love for my city, when it comes to meet all of the wonderful people that we have here. So, I just certainly appreciate the opportunity to be able to do that, so, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Paul, did you have any questions or comments for?
Yeah, that is the topic of the day, and I agree with everybody. The other side, we got to remember, is the amount of effort and time that fire, police, that administration put into this to make it happen. Obviously, the citizens who put on the events. And just as important, the citizens who felt it would be a good thing to go to these events, to meet their neighbors, and to further promote this. And Chief, I know Johnny has kind of been responsible for this, so you don't get the credit. Tell Johnny, thank you very much. But anyway, that's it.
Douglas, did you have any comments or? Well, of course, you know me, I always have a comment about something. So with that said, I got to, I got to express one of my comments in one of the items here about these big box stores. I can't, based on, I think Brother Doolin was back there, I'm not sure if he raised his finger or not, but he waved at me or said hello or, but, okay. I would, I would seriously, the people who are here and, and talk to your neighbors about this, talk to your representatives, talk to, stay informed, because this is a serious situation that could get into, get into, I don't, I don't even think the state knows what to do at this point. And if you read and you, and you go back into the intercourse of what, what effect this could have on the middle class, or even the, you know, taxes of the higher class, it's pretty scary. So, with that said, I already got to speak about that, so, other than that, I want to thank every, Mr. Paul? Oh, sorry. Okay, so let's ask for a motion for adjournment. Mr. Paul, do it. Oh, good, we have a second. Okay. I'm assuming it's unanimous?
Yes.
Thank you, council, let's go. What do you got to do?